Hello. Thank you for attending our Fort Mill Town Council regular meeting, Monday, August the 10th. We appreciate you tuning in virtually to join us as we do the business of the town. As we welcome everyone here, I felt like tonight was kind of a unique and special night. If the COVID pandemic wasn't enough collectively for us, we've been introduced to, I don't know, murder hornets, product shortages, hurricanes, days on days of 90 to 100 degree heat. You know, we're looking at this past weekend of actually having an earthquake right here in Fort Mill, and there's still four months to go. So I can honestly and with big heart say I'm glad to be here serving with you this evening. On a local and more personal note, over the weekend, our community lost a man with the heart of a dad. He spoke to all of us as if we were his children, and he had the courage of a lion when it came to his passion for protecting and advocating for Fort Mill. Charlie Boyett served as a councilman for years, but he never truly left his position as a protector and advocate for this town. I'm grateful for his life, his support, his leadership, and his heart. I'm gonna miss you, Charlie. Rest in peace. So I thought I'd like to at least make that known, as he has graciously served on this town council previous. Let's do a quick roll call. I have Larry Huntley here, Ronnie Helms here, Lisa Cook here, Trudy Himsaw here, our town manager, Davy is here, I'm here, and I believe we have Chris Moody on the line. Is that correct?
Yes.
Alrighty then. Mr. Shirey will not be present this evening. We hope to see him again very soon. So with that, this council will stand for the pledge of allegiance, and then Councilman Helms will give our invocation. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for another beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon our lives. We pray that you'd be with us during this pandemic, during this crisis, and bless our community. We pray that you give us the wisdom tonight to conduct your business, which for the town of Fort Mill, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Council members, you have been provided the minutes of our July 27, 2020 Town Council meeting. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions? I have a motion to approve. And a second. That's Lisa and Larry. I'll go down the call. Larry Huntley, how do you vote?
Yes. Accept.
Okay. Lisa?
Accept.
Ronnie?
Accept.
Chris Moody?
Accept.
And Trudy?
Accept.
I also accept, so for the council present tonight, it is a unanimous decision. We'll move now to public comment. Public comments may be submitted in writing to the town clerk via mail, 200 Tom Hall Street, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29715, or, as we can tell from the more easily accessible avenue, to vburgess@fortmillfc.gov. When submitting a comment, please include your name and address for the record. All public comments received at least one hour prior to the start of the meeting will be presented to Town Council by staff during the information discussion portion of the meeting. Because we have been meeting virtually for a couple of months, and our municipal code calls for this council and this town to provide an avenue for public comment on anything other than personnel or litigatory matters, we have worked hard to provide an avenue for comments to be read during this meeting. It's certainly... What's that mean? It's certainly not as beneficial as looking someone in the eyes across our bench and in our chambers that is here because they have a connection to an issue that they want to make us aware of their comments and their concerns. So, over the last couple of months, we have erred on the side of being conservative and reading all the comments worded in an informational format. We do not read comments that are, have ugly phrases or anything to that effect. We only read those that are informational in nature. And we have been reading those that are sent to us regardless of whether you live in the town of Fort Mill or you live in the township. I can tell you from the numbers of people that continue to send comments, that is something not many people understand. This evening, we will be reading a number of comments that have been presented to us. Every comment that's sent to Town Council members is shared among Town Council members and is read and considered as we look towards the issues that we face and work to make good decisions on. Seven out of 11 of the people that have written in this evening live in the township. They do not live inside the town. That doesn't mean that your opinion is not important, but by code, we are doing everything we can to adhere to the laws that govern how we do business. This is a business meeting for the town of Fort Mill, and we are here to conduct that business. So with that, we're gonna move in. There are no presentations. Our town manager, Davy Broom, and I will alternate reading the comments that have been received. And again, it is not a substitute for having someone stand in our presence and look us in the eye and make their comments so that we too can get a full flavor for the interest that is generated. Okay, I get, "My name is Al Rogat. Al, you're familiar to us. You live at 1006 Crest Haven Lane, and these are Al's comments for our meeting this evening. I seem to recall there was a mention a few months back about a regional TGK Fort Mill, et cetera Advisory Board. At the time, I offered to be appointed to it, but have heard nothing about it since." Al, that issue has been currently tabled. We are not, at this point in time, moving forward, or you might have heard something. "If the property at 160 and 21 has not been discussed or approved as a hospital building site, how come they're deciding on street names for that site? I have no knowledge of street names being considered. I spoke with Davy Broom about a local restaurant where the servers were not wearing face masks. I hope that has been corrected." Number four, "We need to extend and enforce the face mask ordinance. Number five, I agree that new increases to the business impact fees should be delayed until such time that we get back to or near a normal economic situation. And number six, I think the town should work with our state representatives to get the state law changed or removed that prohibits localities from controlling their own destinies regarding statues, monuments, and street names. At least then, we could have a reasonable discussion about the town's existing ones." Hi to all, and thank you. Al? Hello. Hi. Thank you for paying attention and always sending us things to consider. We appreciate you. Davy? Number two.
Hello. My name is Megan Drew, and I live at 4056 Harbin Way, Fort Mill. This is for public comment for Town Council meeting. Will the town be asking our state legislative delegation to vote to overturn the Heritage Act and let the town of Fort Mill, not legislators who can't find Fort Mill on a map, have the final say over our monuments and street names? Do you think having streets named for famous clansmen like Nathan Bedford Forrest and other non-locals famous for their racist views will help attract future businesses to the town? Are you willing to place labels next to the monuments in Confederate Park to contextualize them for the modern era? Can you think about how renaming the streets we named after John Wilkes Booth, modern Tom Hall Street, was a bad decision, and how that decision is different from renaming streets today? Do you care that people from elsewhere think our statues and streets make our town one of the biggest monuments to white supremacy anywhere in the world? Do you think ignoring this problem will make it go away? It won't. We aren't going away, and we will be here every meeting until something is done. Thank you, Megan Drew."
Communication number three is from Emily Carroll at 374 Counselors Way, Apartment 306. Emily writes to us. "Hello. I am writing to make a public comment to be read at the Town Council meeting this evening. Please see the questions below. Will the town be asking our state legislative delegation to vote to overturn the Heritage Act? Shouldn't the town of Fort Mill have final say over our own monuments and street names?" As I'm reading this comment from Emily, it is almost identical to the comment that we just read. So thank you, Emily. I think we have every question that you have asked covered in the previous comments. Thank you for submitting your concern.
The next is from Kelsey Cader. She resides at 114 Market Street, Fort Mill, South Carolina. "Good evening. I support the effort to remove the faithful slave statue and to change the name of Confederate Park along with the names of the following streets: Confederate, Calhoun, Lee, Jackson, Sidney Johnson, Morgan, Leonidas, or Leondis, and especially Forrest. I would like to address some arguments against these actions. A recent public comment suggested desire to remove this monument and these street names means that we would like some families, White Springs, Calt, Spratt, Sutton, Kimbrel, Epps, Patterson, Massey, Potts, Harris, and others, to be seen as the progeny of traitors. This is certainly untrue. These are not the names in discussion. I and many others object to the honoring of names like John C. Calhoun or that of the first Grand Wizard of the Ku Klux Klan, Nathan Bedford Forrest. The names of the families whose earlier members worked to recover Fort Mill exist many..." Let me start again. "The names of the families whose earlier members worked to recover Fort Mills exist many other places in Fort Mill and remain no matter the decisions made about Confederate Park. It has also been suggested that the street names and monuments are intended to show that we would not forget the suffering of those who lived in the area at the time, the Katava people and former slaves included. Yet, the monument to faithful slaves limits itself to only a certain subset of enslaved. It is notable that slaves who weren't obedient or did not want to loyally fight for a cause against their interests are excluded from honor. This comment also suggested that the removal of Confederate names and monuments would show a lack of respect to history, the same history that the monument of faithful slaves attempts to distort. This monument would have us believe that the lifestyle of being enslaved is something to be looked upon with nostalgia. We discuss the risk of erasing history by removing monuments, while this monument seeks to erase parts of history merely with its presence. In reference to how ugly and lack of respect for history can get, this monument is surely an example of it. The desire to remove the faithful slave statue and to change street names like Confederate, Calhoun, and Forrest does not show enmity towards the people who brought Fort Mill back to prosperity in the aftermath of war. If anything, couching their names with attempts to justify or obscure the evils that existed in that time only muddies their legacies. Mayor Savage noted the park had existed for 129 years. Mayor Savage is correct. That is certainly a long time. I hope I'm wrong, but this statement seemed to imply that if something has existed for a certain amount of time, it loses any ability to be questioned. What was the deadline that we missed? Should we have moved on this issue in 1990, 1960? There are many institutions, practices, and even monuments throughout history that existed for much longer than 129 years before people in positions of power finally dealt with Lastly, you may have noted a correlation between incidents of police brutality on the unarmed black citizens and the sometimes successful push in surface cities around our country to bring down monuments or change historic names. You may be thinking this is something like a fad, that it is a side effect of much politicized instances of injustice, that it will pass us by before you have to do much about it. In reality, the climate of upheaval only showed how many of us felt the same about these pieces of the lost cause philosophy sprinkled around our town. You can try to wait us out, but this will not pass like a trend. We will continue to voice our desires to make Fort Mill a better representation of its citizens."
Thank you, Davy. Comment number five was provided by Vicky Atkinson. "Dear local government leaders, I am writing you today about your meeting to consider extending the mask mandates in the city of Fort Mill. I'm a 63-year-old woman living in Fort Mill and have avoided businesses in the city for the last three weeks because of Umask mandate. I do not rely on my local government to keep me safe and well. That is the responsibility of my Lord and myself. My government is responsible to respect and fulfill my constitutional rights. I wonder how the local businesses feel about people avoiding them because masks are mandatory. No, I'm not responsible for keeping others safe either. If you're afraid, stay home. I should not stay home because you are afraid. I have worked through this so-called pandemic with no mask. I have known one person that has had this virus, and he recovered. This virus is a 99% plus no. I am not willing to wear a mask. These numbers have been proven not accurate. This is all about money and politics. Done with all the hypocrisy, I will not be a sheep. I helped to elect the Republicans in our local government, and I expect you to respect our freedoms and trust us as responsible adults and not mandate masks. I also elected Gwen Savage as the mayor and am yet to receive an answer to my email of about three weeks ago. I did attend the county council meeting in person a few weeks ago about a mask mandate and spoke my mind. I was encouraged that the county council voted it down. They respected that it was not enforceable and not really necessary. I trust that our local government will be of the same mindset and not step all over our constitutional rights." Please note that Vicky lives at 593 Starlight Drive, and that is in Regent Park.
I think the previous one lived in Market Street, and that's in Baxter.
Baxter. That is correct.
Correct.
Davy? Number six?
Yes. The next one, Mayor, is from Jennifer Weiser. She resides at 108 Lyman Oak Court, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29715, and that is inside the town limits. "Have you considered these positions? Ask them if the town will be asking our state legislative delegation to vote to overturn the Heritage Act and let the town of Fort Mill, not legislators who can't find Fort Mill on a map, to have the final say over our monuments and street names? Ask them if they think having street names for famous clansmen like Nathan Bedford Forrest and other non-locals famous for their racist views will help attract future businesses to the town? Ask them if they are willing to place labels next to the monuments in Confederate Park to contextualize them for the modern era? Ask them if they think renaming the streets we named after John Wilkes Booth, modern Tom Hall Street, was a bad decision, and how that decision is different from renaming streets today? Ask them if they care that people from elsewhere think our statues and streets make our town one of the biggest monuments to white supremacy anywhere in the world? Ask them if they think ignoring this problem will go away?"
Thank you. Comment number seven is provided by Lori Gallagher. She lives at 1808 Phelps Parkway to the Town of Fort Mill Council. "I strongly urge the Town of Fort Mill to ask our state legislative delegation to vote to overturn the Heritage Act and let the town of Fort Mill, not legislators who can't find Fort Mill on a map. That seems to be redundant in a lot of these messages. To have a final say over our monuments and street names, I'm also concerned about having streets named for the famous clansmen like Nathan Bedford Forrest and other non-locals famous for their racist views due to it possibly deterring future business to the town. Until such monuments can be relocated, I also strongly urge the Town to place labels next to the monuments in Confederate Park to contextualize them for the modern era. I wonder the Town's position on renaming the street we named after John Wilkes Booth to Tom Hall Street? Do you think that that was a bad decision, and how is that decision different from renaming streets today? Does the Town care that people from elsewhere think our statues and streets make our town one of the biggest monuments to white supremacy anywhere in the world? Do you think ignoring this problem will make it go away? I appreciate your time and attention to this important matter." Thank you, Lori Gallagher.
Mayor, the next one is from Linda Bootcher. She resides at 629 Beacon Hill, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29708. It's outside the town limits. "I respectfully request that the Confederate statues in Fort Mill be removed to adequately reflect the community and to demonstrate the qualities of fairness and inclusiveness that reflect a quality city in 2020 and for generations to come." Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Comment number nine is from Gretchen Kelly. Gretchen resides at 887 Harvest Point Drive. "Confederate memorials have no place in a community that welcomes all people. As our town grows and attracts international businesses, this is not only a moral decision but an economic one. Having tributes to a cause that sought to preserve slavery is offensive to every person who considers slavery an abomination. I know that one gentleman at a recent meeting spoke of the men who erected these monuments and mentioned their contribution to our town's growth in its early years. If these men wanted to be remembered and honored for the work they did to help Fort Mill grow, why don't these monuments speak to that? Because the fact is, these monuments were an attempt to glorify slavery and the Confederacy to intimidate the black citizens and be a constant reminder of the painful and traumatic history and its not-so-veiled threat to black citizens who live here. I ask you, would you want to walk through our town and see a memorial to the men who kidnapped, beat, and raped your ancestors? Do you want to see streets named after the cause that fought a war for the right to own your ancestors, to rip children away from parents and sell them to other men? Would you want a street named after the founder of the Ku Klux Klan if your ancestors were lynched and murdered and threatened by that organization? As the leaders of our community in the year 2020, how do you want our town to be thought of? As a modern town where businesses and families are welcomed with open arms, or as a town that clings to a horrific racist past?" Again, this is from Gretchen Kelly at 887 Harvest Point Drive.
The next one is from Jacqueline Broth. She resides at 1191 Spring Maid Avenue, Fort Mill, 29708. "I would implore you to read these words below, not mine, but they encompass how I feel about the statues such as the faithful slaves monument in downtown Fort Mill. Also, might I add that just because something has been there forever certainly doesn't mean it should stay that way. The time for change is now, and the very least one to do in leadership is to advocate for removing these statues." Thank you. "Statues are not history. Statues are symbol. Statues are not history. Statues honor and glorify a historical figure. Statues are not history. When you take down a statue, you do not erase history. When you take down a statue, you reject what the statue represents in the present day. In the 1980s, statues of Marx, Lenin, and Stalin came down throughout Eastern Europe with the end of the Cold War, and 2003, statues of Saddam Hussein came down in Iraq. Are you mad about that? Do you think history was erased and that those statues should have been preserved? Oh, no. They were bad guys. They deserved it. You understand what those statues symbolized, and you feel that taking them down was right due to your worldview. In this context, think about why your gut reaction is to defend statues of people who wanted to preserve the institution of enslaving and murdering black people at all costs. Why do you say you can't erase history? You can erase Southern culture. What do you really mean? With gratitude and hope for change."
All right. And the last comment for reading this evening is from Jennifer McCluskey. Jennifer resides at 729 Warwick Way. "Please remove the racist stature and symbols from Fort Mill. They are hurtful to our black community, and it is not something that our city should be proud of or known for. What do you think would have happened to the slaves that were not faithful? Do you think they would have survived? It is more than distasteful and offensive. It is a slap in the face to the descendants of those that endured those horrific times. How would you feel sending your kids to a park or living on a street that looks to celebrate a time where people fought and died for the right to enslave and torture their ancestors? These monuments were not to celebrate black people. They were used as a direct way to intimidate them. We now know better. It is time to do better." Thank you for your consideration. And again, it is from Jennifer McCluskey at 729 Warwick Way. Once again, we appreciate everyone that has comments and concerns that we have been able to read during a time that we have been meeting virtually. Starting at our next meeting, you know, we will be able to entertain you in person, and we will look forward to that time once again. The comments that we read are from individuals and do not represent anyone from the town itself. I would like to compliment the town staff and council on being amenable to getting input from many different sections of our community, and for researching the Heritage Act, and for taking the time to make decisions carefully and not in a knee-jerk manner. So I would very much like to thank each of you for the work and patience that you've had. The comment made about the timeframe of the statues was simply to say that they've been here all of most of our lives, just as the name of Tom Hall Street was changed before I was born. So I know nothing about how that occurred. So with that, we will continue with our business meeting for this evening. Thank you, Davy, for helping us read those comments. We will move to information discussion item number two. This will be a farmer's market update from Jocana Hester.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Well, thank y'all. I was gonna start out by giving you some statistics about the farmer's market since it started. So it began on July 11th with only five vendors, and it has grown to 15 vendors now. And our vendors include handmade jewelry, gender reveal puzzle, handmade frames and artwork. We have produce and meats and eggs, and elderberry syrup, coffee, baked goods, handmade lotions and soaps and candles, bath bombs and Play-Doh and honey and drink syrups, and even seasonings now. And we have a estimated weekly attendance is around 200 to 300, and the traffic flow on Saturday mornings has been steady throughout the mornings without any lull. So that's been really good. And our weekly sales for five Saturdays so far has generated over $17,000 for our vendors. So it's been well received, and our vendors, of course, are very happy that the community has received them very well. Our public and our vendors, they have been following COVID guidelines, and of course, with the farmer's market being outdoors, you know, masks are not required. Some patrons wear them anyway. Some of our vendors wear them anyway, which is perfectly fine. We want everybody to do what they feel safe doing. But people have been very safe following social distancing guidelines. And I just wanted to give a shout out to our public works department because they have done an outstanding job every week setting up and taking down all the tents, making sure that we have a safe environment with all the construction that's taking place out there. And they even built us an amazing farmer's market sign. So we are grateful for them, and our vendors are very grateful for them because they love getting there and having tents set up for them and the market looking so nice for them. And with the positive feedback that we have received from the community and from our vendors, we would like to extend the market through the fall with end dates possibly Saturday, October 31st, or Saturday, November 21st, which is the Saturday before Thanksgiving. We just feel like fall is such a great time to attend the farmer's market, and we would like to relaunch it as a fall market, and we'll seek out fall-type vendors in addition to our regular vendors that want to participate. And I've heard back from the majority of our regular vendors, and they do want to come back for that as well. And our produce, of course, we'll have fall-type produce items then. And our meat vendors, you can even preorder your Thanksgiving turkey. And our meat vendors, you can even preorder your Thanksgiving turkey from them. So those are good fall things. And I was just gonna just give you a few of our vendor comments because they all sent me some little blurb about what they have loved about the market. And of course, the making money part, they've done really well. And they've been able, they've been very excited to be able to connect with our community and meet more people and build their name, getting their business name out there, and building relationships in our community, meeting other farmers. They love the setup and the location. They love and really want to extend it into the fall because they are all doing so well. And they just think it's a great environment, and they all just want to participate.
Fantastic. I would like to thank you, Jakana. We have been discussing a farmer's market in that location for four and a half years, and we have been able to actually see that come to fruition, and our guesses were proper and right in that our community would enjoy that. And that was pre-COVID. So just imagine what it would be like if we weren't all, you know, trying to do our distancing and wear our masks. I have seen it every week. It's the joyous sight for me. I think that's what community looks like. So thank you so much. I, for one, would be more than happy to see us extend that timeframe. Do we need to take a vote on that?
No, ma'am. Staff will look into that, and we'll just look at, we'll make sure we're following our same COVID guidelines, and we can take that on in the forehead and make that decision to move forward.
Well, thank you, Jakana. Thank you, Public Works. Thank you, Davey. And thanks to all the vendors that come out and make this so special for our community. Counsel, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Yes, ma'am.
Jakana, will you be reaching out to possibly other vendors as well? Maybe vendors that specialize in fall merchandise as opposed to what's been sold in the summertime?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we are going to promote it as a fall market and seek more fall-type vendors as our current vendors that want to keep participating.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Are we planning on doing any kind of a survey or reaching out to the community to find out what vendors they may be interested in? Are there other types of products that they'd like to see represented there to guide them?
I think a survey might be more, to those that watch this and are listening to this, send a note to the town or put a note on the website or our Facebook page about what else you would like to see. Because obviously, we've been happy with what we've been able to acquire at the point. So just send us a happy note about what else you might like to see, and Jakana can see what she can do. How about that?
Yeah, but I think that's a good idea, Ms. Cook, and we can add that on our brand-new website. We will promote it if we get some publicity.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to do some surveys. Maybe we include that as a part of one of our surveys of that community. But I think right now, to get a quicker return, maybe they can just send some comments. Okay?
You can do a survey through Facebook. I know we're pushing for communication, or we're pushing out Facebook as well. So you can do a survey on there or a polling.
Okay. So thank you, Jakana.
Thank y'all.
And see what he can do about that. That'd be great. All righty. Thank you, Jakana.
Thank you.
All right. Our next information discussion item will be a discussion of impact fees. Chris Pettit will be helping us with some information in regards to that. Chris, are you online?
Yes, Mayor, I'm available. So at the request of council, following the last council meeting's presentation by Fort Mill Economic Partners, we've added this item to the agenda. I think we've provided council with some information prior to the start of the meeting. So I'm available should you have any questions or would like to discuss any of the data any further.
Thank you. Council members have received some data that Chris was able to provide in answering some questions from Councilman Moody in regards to this item. We took action to this item based on information that it was pretty much residential-centric, if you will. You know, it was based on new homes coming into Fort Mill and what might be charged there. Unfortunately, some collateral issues arose in what might occur on the business front. I personally have one vote on this, council, and I do not want to do anything to inhibit business growth in our community. I expect businesses to want to serve here and to be a part of our community and to actually be part of the Fort Mill family. So I personally am happy that we're having this discussion, and particularly in regards to the time of COVID, when economic situations are still dire. I don't think we've seen the last of the economic ripples that will occur from having a pandemic.
Chris, I do have a question. In the information we were giving, given 2015 numbers, and then if we reverted back to that same discount, there's still a significant increase in a couple areas, specifically fast food or, you know, restaurant with a drive-through accessibility. I would say it's probably not just fast food, but just restaurants. Supermarkets, it's still a significant increase even if we were to revert back to no change. Can you explain why that is?
Sure. So there's a lot of different data that goes into creating what our maximum allowable fees are by category, and also how those fees then are impacted by the various different types of land uses. So a discount rate is one variable of the equation that determines what the fees are. But there's a number of other variables, including the total valuation of all the owned assets in town, the number of residents within the town limit, the population, the number of employees that work within the town limit, along with the discount rate. Those are all factored in to determine what those fees are. So in addition to that, what we do when we redid the study is every year, there's a group called the Institute of Transportation Engineers, I T E. They publish books of their studies where they look at various types of land uses, and they try to accurately determine per square feet how many employees work within these various land uses. And so every year, we kind of look at what impact a supermarket would have a little differently. So, you know, as supermarkets change and evolve, our studies should change and evolve so that every time we redo the study, we're trying to accurately reflect what an impact is of a supermarket as of 2020. So the basis of any of our commercial fees is the number of employees that are generated per square foot for a business. So the reason why there's a lot of variation, and it's not just down the line, you know, 50% or 10% discount difference, is because those inputs are changed, and the latest information says that the number of employees per square foot for a supermarket is different than it was in 2015.
So if we truly wanted to go back to a tax rate or an impact fee rate that is more financial dollars, specific dollars, we would technically have to go below what our reverse, below reverting to the old discount rate for most of these entities that were given in our example. Does that question make sense?
So there's... Yes, and there's no way for us to go back to exactly the dollar amount from 2015 for every land use. What you'd have to look at is across the board, and just trying to get it close to the overall impact of the 2015 versus the 2020. So, yeah, and as you can see, it's not a straight-line sort of difference. Certain land uses are still impacted more than others. And again, that's because we've tried to go back and make the study more accurate than it was in 2015 to more accurately reflect what impact each different type of land use would have on our system. So the study has changed, so it's not going to be, you'll never get it back to exactly the fees that it was in 2015. So if the goal is to get close, you may be looking at discount rates higher than 50% for fire and municipal facilities. I don't know exactly what would be the closest, but staff can certainly do a little further digging and try and get as close as possible across the board if that's the desire of council.
I would like to comment pretty quickly because in the discussion and description of how we've moved because of the study, Chris, you mentioned that there are many booklets or books or volumes produced from a transportation perspective. I'd like to very carefully point out that at no point in time have we ever collected impact fees for transportation because we did not feel that we could adequately collect money to address the problems in transportation in this community. We would end up having to return those fees. For those of you that are new to this discussion about impact fees that will be watching this or listening to this, an impact fee is just that. It is to address the cost or impact of new growth in a area. So new growth causes us to need additional fire, additional police services. And the impact fee is to help remove some of the burden on the existing population for bringing on new growth so that it is growth paying for growth. Again, I personally did not expect to see the figures, and they're very incremental in nature for the businesses. I do not want to do anything to hinder business growth.
I would like to make a motion, if that's in order.
Yes, you can do that if you would like.
Okay, I'd like to, I move that we roll the commercial rates back to the level as nearly as possible as they were in 2015.
Mayor, if I may, just for clarification's sake, if the desire of council is to do what Mr. Huntley just motioned, then what we'll need to do is ultimately come back to council with an ordinance to that effect. So I'll say the effect of Mr. Huntley's motion would be directing staff to bring forward that ordinance to you at a subsequent meeting.
Okay. Counsel, we have a second? I'll second Mr. Huntley's motion. I think 2015 were the numbers that we were using prior to our last vote, and I'm good with us going back to that and looking at perhaps a more incremental way to accomplish what we need to accomplish after the pandemic expires, and it better expire soon.
So for clarification, Mr. Huntley, in your motion, are you requesting it goes back to dollar amounts equal to what we saw in 15? Not to equal the discounts? Because that's two different decisions.
I don't know. What Chris explained was that based on today's studies, even if we had the same discount rate...
Well, the whole million dollars, yeah.
Yeah.
So right now, in our presentation that was given, a supermarket in 2015, so a grocery store coming, would have had to pay a $23,000 impact fee. Because of the rework of all the numbers that they have to do, and they have to review every few years, it now comes up to a $36,000 impact fee. So even if we revert back to the discount structure we had, there is still a $13,000 increase or a 54% increase in the impact fee for a grocery store. So are you requesting that the motion be more based on the dollars for us to play with the discount rates based on dollars or percentages?
I would say dollars is close as possible.
Okay, because there'll be some. When we look at the first two examples, the flower shop and the daycare, they actually went down. And I'm guessing, Chris, that's probably because of the traffic impact and the employees that changed in the study from now to five years ago? Is that correct?
That'd be correct, yeah. The anticipated number of employees for those land uses went down compared to what it was in 2015.
Makes sense.
So in trying to get more in line with some of these high movers, so fast food, restaurant, and supermarket, and even restaurants and dentist office, to get those more in line with what 15 was, we actually will take a more significant decrease in what it is for the flower shop or small retail and a dentist office. So you can't win across the board. I'm not disagreeing with the direction. I'm just clarifying the direction for staff and make sure we get what you're expecting.
I guess we can also say it's a town that has more...
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment.
Can I ask one question? This is Chris Moody. So lowering these discount percentages for fire and municipal also will lower it for each new residential dwelling as well, correct?
I believe that is correct. Chris Pettit, can you answer that question, please?
That would be correct, yes, ma'am. We can offer discount rates in the category of fire and in the categories of municipal facilities, but you can't have different discount rates for commercial versus residential.
Is that because...
Residential... I'm sorry.
That's because of the way we have it written, or is it a result of how we're driven to apply an impact fee?
That is a result of how the state allows us to operate our impact fees.
Okay, so we're not allowed by the state to separate residential from commercial and have different discount rates. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And Chris Pettit, if we revert back to the discount that was before, given the new impact study, how would that impact residential? So if we...
If we...
You know, we went up on some of these significantly. Would it also have gone up for residential without us changing the discount?
The currently adopted discount rates of 10% across the board result in a total impact fee for a new single-family home of a little over $2,800. Prior to, or the 2015 fees, the total was about $1,800. If we reverted back to discount, just the discount rates of 10% parks and recs, 50% fire, and 50% municipal facilities, a new single-family home would go to about $2,150. So it'd still be a little bit higher than it was in 2015, but fairly close.
So it's still roughly a 50% increase on residential for us doing nothing to change the discount structure from 2015 decision?
I don't have, well, uh, let's see, it'd be a 20% increase.
She's got her calculator out. You're in trouble.
Well, but point being, there's still an increase in residential without us changing the discount structure.
I think her point... Yes, is that there's going to be an increase regardless of, unless we take deeper discounts, there's going to be an increase, which would happen characteristically because things are different today than they were five years ago. Costs are different, and we need to begin to embrace that as a community. Not having raised taxes for nearly 20 years, things don't cost the same today as they did 20 years ago, but we're expected to provide the same services and level of service that we all enjoy here in this community. They don't cost the same. They're with a lot more people. So I do...
A lot more services. We offer a lot more today than we did 20 years ago.
Yeah, we do. So as it stands right now, Chris Moody, did you get your question answered?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
I do have one more question. Chris Pettit, once we make this decision to, you know, relook at the discount structures as Mr. Huntley's requested, if that's the direction council approves, when would be the next time we could review impact fees? Because again, the decision today during COVID is hopefully going to be different six months from now, 12 months from now. So how often can we review our discount structure for impacts?
You're allowed to review your discount structure at any time. So the only thing that would slow you down is we are required to... So the only thing that would slow you down is we are required to do that via ordinance. So you would have to approve an ordinance each time, which requires two readings.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that update.
That's good information to know for everyone. So as it stands right now, Mr. Huntley has a motion on the table that we instruct staff, I don't want to put words in your mouth, instruct staff to proceed to write the ordinance that we could review to get back as close as possible to where we were prior to that last vote in the fees that were established in 2015. Is that a correct summary of your motion? And I seconded that motion.
That's real good. I would have said it.
Thank you, Larry. All right, so because of our virtual capability here, the motion on the table, does everyone understand? Not, all right. Ronnie, how do you vote? Ronnie is a yes. Chris Moody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Trudy? Lisa?
Yes, with an asterisk or request from staff that I didn't get to ask is if we could also do a weighted average when you look at the businesses that have come on board the last 12 months? Again, to Mr. Huntley's example, you're going to have highs and lows. So what's the total financial impact weighted average on businesses that have come forward so that we can see, you know, there is an impact here for residential, there's an impact for business, but where do we net?
I think the step to get an ordinance in writing allows us to continue to discuss before we approve it finally. And we'll have two readings to do that. So is your vote up or down?
It is for yes, yeah. I just want to be sure staff brings that information for us.
Sure. I also vote yes. So for the council that is here today, that's a unanimous vote, so.
You're national.
Larry, how would you like to vote?
Yes.
I guess because I was looking at you and you, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, we will now move to an information and discussion item, number four, update on fall athletic programs with our very own Brown Simpson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Wanted to, I hope you can hear me okay. Wanted to give you an update on where we were with our fall sports registrations. But before I do that, I did want to give you a brief update on, you allowed us back in June to do the adult church league softball for the summer. We had 20 teams participate from various churches around the Fort Mill area, and our program was a success. We had 10 regular season games, and then we had a single elimination playoff, and all that finished up last Monday. So we appreciate, appreciate that. We also have started back with some sports tourism tournaments, baseball slash softball on the weekends. We've had six of those so far since the last weekend of June, and we did skip July the 4th weekend because of a holiday, and all those have been successful. And everybody is doing what they were supposed to do from a COVID-19 safety. So I just wanted to advise you on that. Didn't want to give you an update on our fall youth sports. Our registration deadline, we've been registered now for about four and a half weeks, and our deadline will be this Thursday, August 13, 2020, at 11:59 PM that night. If we got folks that are listening in, we'll see this later. They can go online on our new website, on our Parks and Recreation page, and they can register that way. And that's the majority of our registrations are now that way. We will be offering four different sports for the fall. We will be offering soccer, flag football, baseball, and fast-pitch softball. And currently, as of the day, about 1 PM, we ran our numbers and we've got 553 youth registered for those programs, and so we're excited about that. One note that I did want to let you know is we're not offering tackle football this year, and as a staff, we felt like we would not offer U5 soccer, which is the instructional, or T-ball for the fall season due to the COVID-19 restrictions and the social distancing for the, for that younger age group. We just thought it would be a challenge to manage those kids. I did want to move on to uniforms. We will not have to order any uniforms except for flag football due to not distributing our uniforms. We've got a nice stockpile of those from the spring season since we were not able to get our spring season in. We will be passing out, and staff came up with a safety plan also, too. We have reduced team sizes in soccer from 11-on-11 to 7-on-7, just to make it safer, and it really depends upon the ages in the soccer program also, too. Couple of things that we're going to do, we'll be sending these reminders out next week after we finish our registrations to our parents and our participants, spectators to social distance on sidelines, recommending masks for our spectators. We'll have hand sanitizers at games and at practices. Also require coaches to have masks for team huddles. No post-game snacks or handshakes. Game times will be spaced apart from 5 to 15 minutes. We also will, once again, require our participants to sign a COVID waiver form, and no parents will be allowed on the playing field. And also, we encourage our parents to conduct the daily symptom checks if anybody is sick. We will be using these following sites for our contests and practices. Be using W Bridge Park, all three fields for baseball and softball. We're very fortunate to have a joint use agreement with W Bridge Elementary School and the Fort Mill School District. We'll be using those two fields there, the one out front and the one in the back that we've used in the past for soccer. Also, we'll be using the complex fields for baseball and flag football. Of course, Harris Street Park for softball and baseball practices, Calhoun Street Park for soccer. And also, too, we're very appreciative to the Fort Mill School District for working with us, for using the Comporium Athletic Facility out on Sprat Street for our practicing games with soccer also, too. We, as a staff, recognize the value of teen sports as a form of recreation that provides positive impacts of both the individual physical health and social health of our communities. So we're excited about offering fall sports. We feel in a safe manner, and we feel it's going to be good for the athlete with the above items that I just mentioned. So I'll be glad to entertain any questions you might have, but we certainly appreciate your support also, too.
Thank you, Brown. I know, I know this has been as difficult for your department as it has for all others. You know, we come in contact in the best of possible ways with recreation, and we certainly have been having heartache, you know, that we can't do the things that we used to do. So we appreciate the efforts to pull off a softball program and to get us this far. So council, do you have any questions for Brown?
Do we know of any COVID cases, I have to ask, that have not resulted, but from people who have participated in the sports during the summer?
No, ma'am, we do not. And I'm glad that you asked that question, Ms. Cook, because we also have had our tennis camps, our lessons, and our camps also, too, and we had the kids on the ball. And no, we have not had any issues or any cases that have been brought to our attention.
That's a blessing. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Any further questions of Brown? Brownie, thanks so much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank y'all for your support.
All righty, there are no old business items. We will now move to new business item number one, council to consider an extension of their emergency ordinance, which allowed town council and other appointed board and commission members to participate in meetings electronically, and also revise the town council public comment procedures during the COVID-19 emergency. Chris Pettit is our expert on this. I need a motion for us to open this business item. So I've got a motion in a second from Trudy Heemsaw and Ronnie Hams. So council, you have received some language on this particular ordinance. I think it has been a critical one for us to be able to meet and continue to keep safe distancing. I personally really like being here socially distanced from you guys, but being able to see you, it's a lot more effective for me personally. But I do think, given the nature of this pandemic, I don't know that we know what's going to happen tomorrow. So I personally support that we continue this ordinance as it is written. Any further questions, comments, anything?
Clarification from staff, since it's an emergency order, an ordinance, but not an emergency meeting, as to the number of votes needed for this to pass?
It would need to be a two-thirds majority vote of the council members present.
Okay. All righty then. Any further questions? On this ordinance? Hearing none, the motion on the table is to approve it. Chris Moody, how do you vote?
Set.
I beg your pardon?
Yes. Said accept or yes?
Thank you. Trudy?
Yes.
Lisa? Ronnie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And I myself will vote yes. Thank you for the work on this and keeping us in business, guys. New business item number two, an emergency ordinance requiring individuals to wear face coverings in retail and food service establishment and matters related thereto. Baby Broome is our expert on that. Is there a motion on this particular item? Hearing no motion. You move to extend it?
No, I just moved to take it up.
You have to either support it or deny it.
I'll make a motion to approve new business item number two.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve it and second it. I feel like it's important to note that when the town of Fort Mill determined that we would move forward with the mask ordinance, it was prior to the governor's orders about masks. It was also prior to many of the national food chains and business outlets going to a requirement. This council during this pandemic has been ahead of the curve in doing everything we could to protect our community and ourselves, and I am very proud of that. So we did that in advance of other actions taking place. I do have the executive order from the governor, I would like to read it. Whereas in addition to issuing the above referenced orders and directing other emergency measures, the undersigned has consistently and repeatedly urged South Carolinians to practice effective social distancing and wear face coverings to limit community spread and transmission of COVID-19, and has further encouraged counties and municipalities of this state to enact or implement appropriate and narrowly tailored emergency ordinances, orders, or other measures requiring individuals to wear face coverings in public settings where they are, will be, or reasonably could be located in close proximity to others who are not members of the same household, and where it is not feasible to maintain six feet of separation from such individuals, or to otherwise practice effective social distancing in accordance with CDC and DHEC guidance. We have received a moderate amount of emails as a council and as individuals, both supporting this and saying no. I will tell you once again, this particular ordinance was all about doing anything we could, or would be perceived to be helping protect the health and safety of our constituency. It was not a political decision. So having said that, we have a motion, do we have comments that need to be made as part of our discussion?
I think one thing, as a practical matter, it really doesn't make any difference. I can go into a restaurant and say, I have medical reason for not wearing a face mask. Now God may get me for lying, but I can still go in and I don't have to show anything from any doctor or anything, and that is happening. And there are people who really, really take this to heart that we're doing something wrong. I personally wear it where I'm supposed to. And the only time I really have to wear it too much is during preaching. And I admit, wearing this thing for an hour makes me sleepy. Really. But when I go into a restaurant, when I get on my car, I put it on. When I walk into a restaurant, sit down in the booth, I take it off. You can't eat a sandwich with a mask on. It isn't anybody else. Chris Moody had mentioned that. But you can't with a mask on. And so I just think, you know, just follow what the governor says. We don't have to have a local mandate for it.
I was going to say, doesn't the governor suggest that we have local mandates to support it? Is the way I thought it was in here.
Changed emergency ordinances, orders, or other measures. So certainly think he wants us to support that. You know, this has been a really interesting discussion nationwide, not just in Fort Mill, not just in South Carolina, but nationwide. And there are certainly perspectives on both sides of that coin. Larry, you... Again, I think our council viewed it on the surface as a potential way of protecting each other and voted for that with that in heart. No other ulterior motive, heat at all. So Chris Moody, do you have any comments?
No comment.
I had a test weeks ago, and it did come back negative. I found out in the process that if I had came out positive, and so many days that took, that one, I was just taking them so many days apart that it could come back negative. And just say I had taken five different, that would have been five different people. And I just, it just doesn't make you wonder, and I hear about people who have got killed in an accident, and they find out they had the virus during the autopsy, so they said they died from the virus, not the automobile accident.
I don't disagree that the numbers are definitely skewed and not an exact science for us at this point. But I also know my 43-year-old cousin was in the hospital with this, had a heart attack, had kidney issues, and had COVID. So it is a real disease. She took every precaution she had, and I'm going to do the same for myself and my family. God is in control is my belief, and yes, while that's the case, I do think he expects us to take precautions as we can. And I want us to, I just want us all to be considerate of each other, you know, when we're doing this, when we're around each other. Would a mask have kept her from getting it if she wore it 24/7? Probably not, because you can't wear it 24/7. I understand that, and I don't think anybody on this council expects citizens to be wearing them all the time. But I also want my family to have the ability to go to church and to go to a restaurant or go shopping in person. I want us to be able to have our kids be in school or receive an education or play sports, as Brown said. And if a small portion of that is wearing a mask in order to participate, I'm not against supporting our governor in the direction he gave us. So my two cents on that at this point.
Ronnie, Trudy?
And Larry, I'll also tell you, you may not know this, but we have a neighbor in our neighborhood, and three adults in that family had COVID for 18 days.
Yeah, I personally know two. One of them is a resource officer for Fort Mill School System. And the other one was, I call them girls, she's an 83-year-old girl. She started school when I did in the first grade, and she had, and she almost died, but she did recover. But she had underlying conditions, so it could happen.
I also know a guy that had it, tested positive, my wife was with him, and he never got sick the first day.
It's a nefarious disease, and it treats everybody differently. I can just tell you that whether there's an ordinance or not, I intend to wear mine for you and for me, because I would not want anybody to get it, and I don't want to be a carrier for it. So...
I mean, no different than...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but prior to voting, we'll need the motion to be amended to clarify the length of time in which you wish this should be effective. It can be effective no longer than 60 days, but the ordinance was written with that information not included because we wanted council to be able to define that in the approval motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so Lisa... Okay, so Lisa, I believe you were the motion maker?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to extend the emergency ordinance requiring wearing face coverings, as stated in the previous ordinance, for a time period of 60 days or until revisited by council.
So the motion has been updated to 60 days or at such time as revisited by council, and Trudy has seconded that. Any further discussion?
I do.
Beg your pardon? Okay, sit still whoever's on the phone. Chris. Okay, Ronnie.
I'm not an advocate for forcing people to wear masks.
Okay.
I am an advocate for them making their own decision to whether they want to wear a mask or not.
Okay. Any further comment before we move forward? All right, and we need to vote. Larry, the motion on the table is for a 60-day extension.
No.
You vote no. Lisa?
Yes.
Yes, Ronnie?
No.
Chris Moody?
No.
Trudy? And I vote yes as well. So we're at a dead heat, guys, and at a dead heat, it doesn't pass. It does not pass. Thank you for your efforts and your honesty as we discuss things that just sort of seem these days to always be difficult. How about that? Thank you. New business item number three, council to consider appointment for accommodations tax advisory committee. I need a motion to open this so Davy can give us information.
I'll make that motion.
Trudy has made a motion, and Larry has seconded it. All right, Davy?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. State of Carolina has an accommodations tax grant that they offer and require any municipality that collects more than $50,000 in a one-year period. And accommodations tax is money going into any hotels or hotels. So town of Fort Mill qualifies for this grant. Because we qualify, we're required to administer a grant process for this program. Part of the grant process is that nonprofit organizations that draw tourism or tourists to the town of Fort Mill can submit applications for accommodations tax grants. Part of the program is that you must have an accommodations tax advisory committee to study the applications that have been submitted and make recommendations on the ones that qualify or the amounts that they qualify for. The state guidelines are very specific as to who can serve on these committees. It's made up of a certain number of hospitality organizations, accommodations, and cultural organizations. So we have a committee seat that is vacated in the hospitality portion of this advisory committee. Staff has reached out very recently trying to locate someone that would be willing to take up that advisory committee seat. We're happy to bring forth Jason Woselus, and Jason, if I butchered your last name, I thoroughly apologize. But he is a manager at the Improper Pig on Main Street, and he has been, he's excited to serve on this committee. So we are, staff is bringing to you to, for council to decide if we could add him to that committee.
All righty, then. So we have a motion on the table, do we not?
Yes.
We do? And second, any discussion?
For the.
And I've been very impressed with it.
For the members that are on there from hospitality, is it diverse areas of town would be my only concern, not to have all the people on Main Street, for example, to have diversity across.
That's a very good question, Ms. Cook, and we thought the same thing. And as we were seeking out possible candidates, we started and went, looked around town. We are, we do have some members on Main Street serving on this committee. But again, we talk about COVID-19, and one of the drawbacks to COVID-19, it has hit the hospitality industry very hard, and many of restaurants are working very diligently to stay in business, and they just couldn't afford to take time away and/or have the staff that they could afford to send to serve on this advisory committee. So that's why it was, it was a difficult process for staff to find someone, but we were very happy that Jason decided to join us.
Thank you for trying.
Yes.
I have a question, please. Um, how many members on that committee? Have you already said that?
Yes, Mayor, there's seven committees. Seven committees.
Okay. All right. We have a motion on the, sorry. Think about that teacher on Charlie Brown every time I talk to my mask. Sorry. Larry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Ronnie, how do you vote? Lisa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris Moody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trudy, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes and thank you to Jason. So it's a unanimous decision. We are very grateful for those that are willing to take time out of a very difficult time in our lives and to participate in helping the town. All right, we do not have any executive session items for this evening. Ronnie, do you have anything for the good and the whole?
Just a comment on what I said a while ago, that I will wear a mask, even though I'm not an advocate for pushing the mask. I will.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mayor?
I'm the same way. Somebody made a comment, public works, people about how they really perform. I'm always amazed. I ride down the Indian Street a lot in the grass. I cut my driveway with a pair of scissors so it looks nice. When you ride down by the cemetery, it looks like they were cutting a pair of scissors. I'm sure they've got more sense than that. But it's just, the whole town is, really looks nice.
Amazing, especially in the heat. Especially in the heat. Chris Moody, you got comments?
No, ma'am, no comment.
Trudy?
Thank you.
Lisa?
I do want to make a comment about how proud I am to serve on this council, that despite what is put in social media, what's put in many of the emails or letters we receive, whether it's public comment or just emails to us, that we serve not in a political fashion, but for the better good of the town. And whether Republican or Democrat or Independent, it doesn't matter when we serve on council. We're nonpartisan, and that the reasons we vote, the way we vote, are more based on our beliefs in our town and not what line we eat, any of us sit on. So I just want to stress that to those that are watching, because there's been some not-nice and untrue things said and a lot of communication going back and forth, and I'm very proud to serve you guys and that we don't play that party line on this council. So thank you.
Well, we had two items tonight that could have been very contentious.
Yeah.
And some places have been screaming at one another, and we didn't do that.
We don't do that. Lisa, I think those are wonderful comments to make. I think throughout my 16 years of serving with, I think you and I have probably served the longest, the three of us, I have found that no matter how difficult the issue is, we tend to try to make the best decision we can, and then we walk away and support that. We support that for one another. We appreciate and respect the system that's in place to help us make decisions. We are not partisan. I will say, the last two years have been difficult. The council culture that's out there, where everybody's got to say something, I say it's red, and you say it's pink, and you say it's orange, and we get angry with one another for having different opinions defeats the purpose of having multiple opinions to get to the best decision.
Not having a conversation.
Not having a conversation and not showing respect for one another. So Ronnie and I just voted oppositely on an issue, but I respect Ronnie. I respect his right to vote that way, and I don't have any hard feelings, nor would I. So I, Lisa, echo that this is an important practice in society that needs to be replicated, not destroyed. So thank you, all of you, for serving and for remaining respectful and professional among us. You're pretty special people. So thank you very much, Davy. Thank you for staff preparing and getting us through these meetings virtually. I just really want to embrace the day that we're back without masks and can be normal. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment at this point.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Got a motion we adjourn. Larry?
I'm definitely in favor of it.
Yeah, I'm hungry. Ronnie?
I'm in favor.
Chris?
Accept.
Trudy?
I'm here. Hello?
Yes, Lisa?
I accept this one.
And I do, well, thank you all for joining us. Please go about and have a safe week.